I don't have one line, I have to print it out. Unfortunately.
Well, we'll talk about that same time.
Go, go follow. It's in there.
Okay.
Alright, um. Do we need to start?
Do you want me?
No, you didn't just start. Correct. And we will be very, very confused to do business with the announcement that the Middleton Councilor and Deputy have resigned their positions. Um, unfortunately, that was expected today. Um, we will be appointing a new tax collector counselor in interim who will serve until the next election.
How do you go about the payment? Do people apply? Do people, or is it just like friends and family?
Yeah.
How can you get appointed as a town clerk?
Is he?
You said you had friends and family, or can you apply?
You can apply, yes.
Okay.
Figure if they're applying, what's got us up? We have somebody who has got his done before, who we were gonna reach out to and see if they were interested in taking this position.
A former employee?
A former, yes.
Just one thing I need to add, um, in general, you mentioned, uh, fire, you don't fire a truck?
Yeah.
I think I might just have.
Okay. Alright. Um, that's him, and I have a planning board complaint from Heather. I haven't tried to.
No, it's okay. It's pronounced Joveblock.
Okay.
And I guess I'll move up here for the planning board to hear me, and I'll try to speak loud. Bear with me. I'm very nervous. My name is Heather Joveblock, and I own a piece of property at twenty-five Elaine Road, but live full-time in Dover, New Hampshire. I'm here today to request a reservation and/or recuse of Christine Maynard from the planning board, and feel there is a risk for serving at other public offices for the town of Middleton for the following reasons: Guilty to disclose personal conflict of interest in relation to her work in rescinding Article fourteen from the town zoning ordinance as cited in RSA six seven three fourteen; two, acting in personal bias; three, violating integrity and ethics by being dishonest. On Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, I received a letter from an attorney personally representing Christine Maynard, making false claims about the use of my property, citing covenant de violations, and threatening litigation if I do not comply with demands to remove my camper. That she states that she has personally witnessed me living in by July first. I have not been living in my camper. My interactions with Miss Maynard began in August of twenty twenty-three when I messaged our member Sunrise Lake and Light Association Facebook page to ask a question. It was at that time I started being what I felt to be harassed by Miss Maynard as secretary and treasurer of Sunrise Lake and Light and Land Association about the use of my property and storing my camper there, claiming I was violating covenants in my deed. I continually asked if she had a personal problem with my land, used to contacting me personally and not through the SLLA member Facebook page as a board person, because it appeared as though she was speaking on behalf of the entire association when doing that, and I thought that purpose of the association was to manage the use, not personal properties. After reviewing my covenant deed and the actual SLLA, I began pressing for more information about the association and its record keeping, since I did not find, since I could find no public information about the association, its record keeping, um, other than our Facebook. They had no other public record other than our Facebook group. She could not provide any recent artist or admitted agendas or financial statements. She would not respond to my request or only provide part of the information I asked for, and only after several follow-ups. It was difficult to get in contact with anyone other than Miss Maynard until the first minutes were shared. I was able to provide evidence of this to the board, but I do invite the public to comment that they may have had similar experiences with the SLLA. Finally, Miss Maynard said that she was going to look into whether the association could enforce the covenants on the property deed and subsequently moved to spend three thousand dollars in members dues on an attorney to do so without the consent or knowledge of all members. This was the first conflict of interest I experienced with Miss Maynard in her role on the SLLA. I felt my dues were being used against me, but there was nothing I could do since I felt like there was one person that held all the power. The first meeting minutes we ever received as members were in May of twenty twenty-four. I often had to demand information before Miss Maynard provided to us. When asked if I could record the meeting to make sure the minutes were accurate, I was told no. The attorney research paid for by the SLLA was shared with members at the September twenty twenty-four meeting. The document stated membership to the Sunrise Lake Lands Association was voluntary, and the covenants in question were not created with a enforcement mechanism. It was advised for property owners to go as civil group if they had issues with land use according to the research. After it was shown that our dated property rights gave us access to the parking area, beach, and bow arch, I decided I could not be part of something that I felt used to money against the best interest of its own members, and I resigned the membership donating my dues. I feel other associations around the lake are very transparent. Miss Maynard appears to be the sole point of contact, and everything feels private about Sunrise Lake Lands Association, and that makes me question what true intentions are for serving on the planning board. I will now move on to the second main conflict of interest that relates to the planning board. Miss Maynard has had a key role in making changes to the Middleton Town Zoning Ordinance after having conversations with me about my land use and while serving as a planning board member. Particularly, she had a major role in the execution of rescinding Article fourteen, private campsites. This was the article that protected the way I was using my land from a town perspective. The following minutes will show Miss Maynard's conflict of interest with the planning board as it specifically relates to camping on private property. February eighth of twenty twenty-four, under new business, Christine Maynard states the rules about having a camper on personal property need to be reviewed and updated. On May ninth, twenty twenty-four, Miss Maynard volunteered to cover family-kept campgrounds and Article fourteen, private campsites, because I feel she had personal intentions and interests. In January sixteen, twenty twenty-five, Miss Maynard asked how rescinding Article fourteen, private campsites, would affect the existing campsites, and then Jane Lawrence said he would investigate it. Miss Maynard dis served against the chair of the town planning board while simultaneously pursuing personal litigation against me. This litigation is directly related to her work on the planning board. That is a violation of her oath as a public officer and a clear conflict of interest, in my opinion. I learned the ordinance changed when I messaged my neighbor, who also has a camper on their property, to see if I received legal papers from Miss Maynard on June eighteen. They stated no, but that the town just voted to have camping ordinance change, so that's probably why I got the letter, and I immediately investigated and realized the conflict. My opinion is that after Miss Maynard realized she could not use the SLLA as a mechanism to go after my land, she used her town position, resources, and funds to rescind Article fourteen, knowing this was a civil matter all along. According to zoning board minutes dated three eighteen twenty-five, Carl Roy said a resident can leave an unoccupied camper on a lot for an indefinite amount of time. Since the campsite article was rescinded, there are no days allowed that someone should live in a camper unless there is a building term. This would be the point that I feel Miss Maynard realized she would need to claim that I was actually living in my camper in order to have a valid argument with her students and eventually the town. By other concerns, Miss Maynard continued her role on the planning board in trying to prevent me from building on my lot by further influencing zoning ordinance changes to align with SLLA covenants in her own personal deed and covenants. I would like it noted that it would be very difficult to accept any directive from the planning, zoning board or town with her as a member, especially as it relates to any changes that were suggested by her when it comes to town zoning. This is why I'm asking the board to consider Miss Maynard's resignation from all town positions and/or recuse from any decisions regarding my property. I feel I'm being specifically targeted since I am the only property being framed in litigation, yet there are at least eight other properties in the neighborhood that have campers on them as of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And thank you for taking your time, and I'm happy to answer further questions.
So, we'll start off with questions from the board. Do they have a question?
Is there an outstanding property in town?
There is not.
Oh, awesome.
I would say once a week, maybe. It's hard to tell, and when I'm there, I've never been there for more than twenty-four hours, and I have proof of that. I have neighbors that are witnesses that will write proof to that, and I also have a lecture that's hooked up, and I have electricity records that will prove that as well.
So. We're now going to Miss Maynard.
Yes.
Would you like to offer a vote?
So, I will say that as for ninety percent of what she's, ninety-eight percent of what she's saying is all a civil matter, um, the covenants are separate from town, in-town ordinance, country jurisdiction. Um, so those are two different things. I always make it clear whether I feel the association, town, personal, of if I feel there's gonna be a potential of a conflict of interest, I refuse myself on voting. Anything that is gonna mean for changes, ordinances, all getting, you know, several areas prior to the election. Everything goes through the pay-in parties, it gets approved before it goes on the ballot, and then it goes onto the ballot and it gets voted for by the voters of this town. Um, so in the end, if an article gets rescinded or voted in, it's not me or any one particular person. It is done by the townspeople of this town. Um, I don't feel as though I've ever over said I've always made it clear of which way I was, I was speaking, and if I feel as though it's not appropriate for me to vote, I will vote on something, I'll recuse myself. But everything else that she's brought up is all a civil matter, and it is separate from town. And it has nothing to do with town ordinance, and it has nothing to do with anything else. And as for anybody else camping, from my knowledge, the person who brought this from her told me that he does not use it at all as a campsite, that he uses it to store his property. Um, and then there's another issue that's being handled because it's on a town level. Um, so it has for anything else that she's talking about, it all has nothing to do with the town, it's all a civil issue.
Do they have a question? Alright, uh, now we're opening up for the public duty stuff. Does anybody want to say anything about?
I think there's already, I think you've dealt with the processes. Do you know what the processes for moving the board are?
Yeah, so this is the first step where we have to have a public, uh, vote complete. Then we have to have a public hearing on that matter alone, and decide whether or not it has reached a level to be, for that member to be removed.
Uh, which one? Uh, which one first? So, code for the car, right? Um, so concerning the camper ordinance change, um, we are in the process of enforcing the camper ordinance across town. There are some around our neighborhood that I know aren't there, but they're not actually staying in this, what it was. But I also haven't physically seen you stay in this, so just, you don't, I haven't seen you stay in it this year, but.
I was just gonna basically speak to the same things, Carl, because I, as for it, it went around, yeah, addressing issues that's on our, uh, campsites and our campers.
Do you have a port of body on any of these processes?
I mean, there's a port by my property, yes, there is. I love, also the, um, association friend Nicola has a port of body on their beach as well.
Question.
Yeah.
Is there anything that says anybody can have a port of body, or is only going after people who have campers on that property? Like, if I have all of that port of body of my own?
I don't think there's any rule against port of bodies on any of these properties.
So then that has nothing to do with our own camper?
I don't think it has something to do with setbacks. This was the state regulation, Carl.
For port of body?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I don't think there is one.
Because it's just a portable storage device versus, it's not.
Yes, it stores other things, uh, properties. And according to the old, even if, um, somebody were to camp, even if we still had our private campsite, according to Nancy, you still have to follow proper setbacks, which would be, the camper would need to be fifty feet from the road, twenty feet from, uh, signs, which is not it.
So, that's my question. Anybody have a port of body?
Yes.
Correct. That's nothing to do with whether there's a camper inside or not. Anybody who's down there, port of body on their property.
I mean, but there are regulations.
Where are these regulations? And what are they?
I'd like to speak to that state enforcement.
You just said you can have a port of body. If we have one at the town.
Wash the lungs for a moment, please.
I, I've done some research on this and found that in general, um, that port bodies are considered safer than septic systems because they're contained. And I called my septic system company specifically, and they confirmed to me that they use, like, safe chemicals that are, you know, maintained for that. Mine is pumped every week, so I'm sure that my, like, having a port of body is safer than, like, my next study or a system is failing.
Port of body regulations.
What are the regulations on, or port bodies then?
I haven't been able to see any, any version of the code books or anything like that.
But, so would this be a matter of where it's originally been part of the association or?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look into it.
And then there's also the matter of gray water. Isn't there a port of body as a town beach? What is the setback from that, from the water from the road, from the parking lot?
Right. I mean, I really don't think that there is a setback for a parking lot, but I get, but I stopped the property. I got some people that I've got down that I'm trying to find out.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
We have a question. Now, this gray water, what's the state regulations on gray water?
Has it been said?
Or if you're staying at a place at any time, washing dishes, you taking showers there?
Are you safe in that line?
I'm not. That's quite all right.
Just to be clear, any port of body company right now will pump on a camper just like they will at, so who's the station pumping the gray water on the ground? Or anybody's pumping gray water?
I asked what the regulations were, what the, that's all I'm asking, so again, because I think that's also an issue.
I don't have any water in my camper. My bathroom's just ripped out completely. It's a closet, and there's no water in my camper. I use hand sanitizer. My dishes are brought home with me. My trash is brought home with me. I am a carry-in, carry-out kind of girl. I use my land like it's a public stake park. Day use only. Because I have a beach, right, and that's all I use my beach.
All you, all you have?
I've had the property for nine years now. Every year I do a little bit more work for it. I had a driveway coming, we had electricity coming. I was going to do septic. I'm nervous now to move forward with that, because I'm afraid that I'm gonna be prevented from doing septic things now. But that's my goal, is to build.
Well, I think our next step is to issue a tally of information, and it's one that we have discussed in the flexibility culture. Let's go to the front.
Hi, sorry. Um, I have a separate issue. Um, I don't think you have campers or port of bodies. Um, it's Katie. Katie McMath. And I also live on my way around from her, um, probably. It's keep on my way, you know. Um, and my other was saying this too, she doesn't work for her, she does, I have two, her husband and she, he's very good. Right here on her place. Um, I think my separate issue is. Um, my husband and I, I already emailed you now. Um, my husband and I bought our house last year. Um, we've been living in it, writing through my grandmother for years now, um, but we bought it last year, and made my goal, let's probably submit my new home, a child, but then in home salon. Um, mom's for sure, and then work out. Um, so now my house is for sale. My mom's, um, so, what do you think about that? My issue probably would've been, like, up enough to, like, my husband and I respect that it came down to apparently an association issue. They said, no, you can't have an in-home salon, even though my house was built with an in-home, in-home salon, and there was an in-home salon down the road from me in twenty eighteen, I think. Um, but it did come down to an association issue. My conflict of interest, I guess, I would say, is was actually, she was on the planning board and the association, and it kind of did become a link back and forth, and it comes finally again. I went to the town asking for questions, and it was, it is to be a variance, to get to talk to the zoning board. And we actually, no, that's not gonna work, and we actually, no, we can't. And it came down to the covenants of, the first one is you're not allowed to have commercial business inside a residential hall unless by written agreement. So that's why I'm trying to get that written agreement, and at least I don't want to decline all of it. So, anything, actually, I guess, um, I'd like to mention, what, what do you, uh? What, yeah.
Um, we speak for her right time, because it's near cluster. The written agreement that she's speaking about, that she was told from the planning board from Christine, that she had to go to the association to get the written agreement. During the planning board meeting, she was told, don't bother, because the SLLA already decided that there would be no written agreements ever be ever during September twenty-four or. It asked for those things.
Correct.
It's, she was told, they don't exist. They do exist. I provided them to the board. There was no such decision ever made during that meeting. So her concern is that she went to the planning board at that time, she might have been misled to believe that she could not have asked for special permission, and now her house is for sale, and she's given out the hope of opening a home salon in her house. Please correct if I'm wrong.
I want to see that.
No, that's right.
Um, it did come down to, I did have, and this is now an association that you understand, um, I mean, I asked, what would I need to do in order to, like, get a written agreement, and I apparently would have had to get one hundred seventy-six signatures to say yes to the association, which, um, that's, wow. I got it. So actually, I'm also here today, uh, to get some type of agreement, or not a agreement, I'm sorry, that's not it, but some type of, something inviting, um, from the town that, you know, say, uh, we met, wasn't allowed, um, spa, blah, blah, blah. They got established in a hole down the road, also because if, if there are written agreements in the future being written, or I just, I just feel like something where I think I've tried to write association.
So, is that something where you prefer, could it be you today? Well, it's, uh. Uh.
Right, yeah. I just.
Perfect.
So. Well, so anyways, so I was, um, emailed by one of the board, one of the board members saying, could you please contact A G's, their questions? Uh, I looked into certain things. I think I spoke with Carl, because she didn't think that Carl was helping her, so I called Carl and said, you know, what do I tell her? What's the code enforcement sign and what's? What do we do? And, um, so Carl had told me, well, if she needs plumbing, she needs a property area, if it's just, you know, it's one thing for another, it's, doesn't need one. So I called, um, and explained that I'm a very new chair, I, you know, I believe that it has, that you potentially need a variance because we're not so. I ended up being incorrect, drunk, her not needing to go to the zoning board, and ended up clarifying that after a later conversation. Um, I made it clear of, you know, this is the town side of things, but also I wanted to give the courtesy of what I know that property does have covenants. I explained where the whole history of everything, although there were things that were allowed in the past. It was allowed through town, not through association or anything else. And I did make it clear, you know, I'm talking to you as this person as chair, but right now I'm gonna take this hat off, and I'm gonna let you know just as a courtesy that, you know, you do have covenants, so be aware of it. There could potentially be a civil issue. I made it clear of how I feel about the covenants in the property, and always made it, I made it clear, uh, the planning board meeting that she attended. I made it clear, uh, the association meeting that she attended, that if a decision was made on any different level, then I was refusing myself one hundred percent. I actually contacted the N H M A regarding the matter of refusing myself, because I didn't want anything to do with it on the town side, because I was not going to bring the town into an issue that was a civil issue. And N H M A may agree with me on that, that I should refuse myself, and I made clear that I would have. That is a civil issue. That is, the property covenants are civil. They, you know, this town has zero control over the matter. And as a property owner in that area with the covenants, I, I stand on it. As for the association, she didn't get the meeting minutes, um, from September. Unfortunately, I re-reviewed them and didn't specify what one of the board members specifically said. I do not feel as though we should make any stance either way. And the association as a whole said, after we hired and we voted to hire an attorney to research the covenants and find out who had the jurisdiction to enforce those covenants, um, that the association did not want to say yes or no to a law or any money. They wanted to keep it as a civil matter, and that if any property owner within that area had an issue, they could dispute it amongst themselves. They wanted to kind of keep it, but we originally went to hire an attorney to research the covenants. We wanted to make sure that we had facts of who was the, uh, subject of the covenants, because the company that developed the property is no longer in existence. And we didn't want to just assume that it was the association or it was civil matter. We wanted to know for fact and for law. You know, we spoke with other associations around, like, kind of what they're said and what they're expected, but we wanted to kind of forecertain. And we got a whole, like, seven-page write-up of what was back in the kitchen and what was law. And we found out the association cannot call their past association, or they can be held civilly. And all I did, I never made a vote either way. I always made it very clear of, here's my thoughts as an association member, here's the thoughts as the chair, and I would refuse myself at any point in time.
So, our next step is to sub, that will be, yeah.
I, I'm just confused. I don't know if the question was answered as to whether, I mean, I think she said she was not giving minutes, and said that she was told she could not receive special permission, and that's in our covenants. So, if that part of the covenant still remains, and special permission can be granted, that.
And she was told special permission would not be written to anyone.
Why? Because that's what the association, the association as a whole at that meeting voted and said.
Are you there?
No.
Right.
And that was a great, this great meeting that she was, that she just attended in, in May. When she came and asked, the association as a whole, I said no.
The, the whole entire?
The associa, the, the, when you're voting, you're voting to go to change covenants? No, we're not changing.
But you are.
Because that's the covenant. Sorry. So, it was not voted to change covenants. You really cannot change covenants.
So, it sounds like at this point, regardless of the decision, we're, we're supposed to have to have a special meeting about this issue. So, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna schedule that, and we will let everybody know what's, uh, what has to happen. Alright. Well done.
Please do not leave us here. Now the agenda is.
Yeah. Yeah, for Wakefield, uh.
What on my.
Well, I would.
Now, yes. Hi, I'm Mary Goodson, I'm the past vice president and past president of the Lions Club, and this is Natalie. She is the great child behind, what you might have seen in, as you've driven through Wakefield, the Slowdown Wakefield. Are we ready to meet for that? Then we called Bonnie, and Bonnie said we needed to come and talk to you all. Yeah, so, we're the Greater Wakefield Lions Club, and that covers your town, Milton. And a few residents, um, approached the club, asking, that's great, can we do it in Milton? Um, so like Mary said, I reached out to the rep department, Bonnie, um, about, about the program and what it was, and that residents were interested in, and we'd love to help you guys get it started. Um, so Slowdown Wakefield, has everyone seen the sign, so you can, are you slowing down? I mean, I've been affected, because what, what, you know, we don't want to ask for signs to the world, and they're not going to be affected. But I know that when I see it, I look at my speed dial and I'm pretty sure that I won't. And I also have heard, I mean, we've gotten great feedback from, from the residents of Wakefield, Bonnie. It really brought together on our, like, town Facebook pages. It was positive, like a positive reaction, positive comments, which you don't always see these days on Facebook town pages. Um, and as part of it, we also organized a couple of ride, like, walk to school days. Um, one was, like, hosted by our rep department, and they had breakfast out, um, for the kids who are riding and walking to school. And then we had one the following week, the Lions Club had their, um, their, you know, Wakefield day. Yeah, we should see this up from, um, Milton, how much you do. Whether I feel good times, they, they say things like, you know, smile, things are good. Awesome, yeah. Do that. Um, I also helped, um, the school, I was like a liaison between, the, like, Walk the Lines of New Hampshire and Paul School, and helped bring the organization into the school via a presentation to the students about industrial safety and banking safety. Um, so it was like a lot of activities about being an industry, about being a driver in town. Um, and like I said, some of your residents have acquired about it, and would love to, uh, have a Slowdown Milton. What is the cost of this? So the sign, when, the first two hundred signs that the Lions Club purchased in Wake, Wakefield was, I requested eight hundred dollars on Monday, and it ended up being like just under seven. So that's.
What would be like around seven, how it was?
Yeah. To be safe, because crazy shooting. Your little quarry coming on the day to check swab. Yeah. And what would it entail for us? Just give us a chat. And we'll go with everything else. Go get in touch with Heidi, with that person who was our vice principal in Wakefield, and now chief principal here. And we love coordinating the first, the school day, and see if we can do the same type of bike, ride, or green walk, or green, the rap, we can work with you to do a bike walk to school day, if you're asking for a grant. I don't know, one lady invited to walk, you can pass. It is kind of tough here. And we have a very small rep, it's only six of us. Vice president, Sophie Care, and, uh, so a lot of them were, so. Another part of it was that both the Bike Walk the Lions of New Hampshire and the rep were able to provide free helmets to students. And I know that our rep department purchased, they were for a grant, and they were donating it to the department to give. Um, so I can talk to our director about how that works, and I would like to go out more, and I would like to go out to school day, if you just like to probably get a free helmet. Um, the, the Bike Walk Safety Lions Club wants a lot of literature. They get to pass out with the helmets, um, like how to size a helmet, how to step for kids, to make sure it fits right. Um, and then kind of just rules for the road vehicles. Yeah.
Um, what did you guys use for a route for your walk or bike to school? Did you, did you guys, the only concern I have is our road is only twenty-two feet wide here.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, um, if they wanted to do, pick, pick a particular day.
Yeah.
Like if they wanted to be down here and walk down there, I'm sure we would probably set up a detour.
Yeah.
Uh, because I know Wakefield has sidewalks and a little wider str, well.
We, we.
I did see a sign, because I, I bet you Wakefield.
Because she lives on a very busy roadway, doesn't have sidewalks.
Right, yeah, so I, I know our roads are twenty-two feet wide, and my only concern would be, uh, King's Highway is a, a pretty busy road. So if they did happen to plan something like that, I would suggest, uh, setting up a detour. Uh, you know, maybe they're going to be here and just go down. I think it's a good, a great idea, uh, some fun for the kids and all that, but safety-wise.
Yeah, absolutely.
This, this road gets a lot of traffic from Loafboro, and the people that are traveling through, I think, are in a hurry.
Sure.
They, they usually zip down through here and then zip out Governor's Road, then try to get the highway.
Yeah.
So that would be my only concern, and just coordinating that and, and getting.
When we organized ours, the, the police department knew. They were driving around, and I would ask the kids for biking to school. If kids wanted to participate, that were, that didn't live in an appropriate place to participate, they were in a park at the Lions Club, and start there and make it to the Paul School. So now you can then park, yeah, and then just go right.
Right, right.
I mean, that would be very, I mean. So in both probably, you do the same thing, they do a spot, they do the town hall. And then you have the highway part of it, they have the piece, rather than the evening, they have. They have, and then walk along the, and they make sure it's very safe. And the other thing is, so I, I don't know if they still do it, but they used to have a, a piece of covenants. They have these, bring it to somebody, for the case to, to give out when it's, what can be something, or. Yeah, I mean, I feel like the board, the com departments are working together to make this happen. Like it's just bring, like, it's more community getting together.
That's always my goal, is to have all the departments working together.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? No? All right. Anybody from board? So I think at this time, we have information, it's something that I don't think anybody's ready to make a decision on right now, or could be wrong, but. So.
All right, so you can get in touch with us?
Yeah, I'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Talk with the board, and I'll talk with the rep.
Okay. Michael. Would be to have this happen for September or October, so that we can start the school up that way, and then probably we would have another walk day in May.
Good, as, well, like I said, as soon as we can, we'll be in touch.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I did see you guys out there with this.
Thank you.
I gave you, I gave you.
We have meetings.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, next thing is, let's, uh, we've been asked about providing domestic partner insurance coverage. We have an employee who.
Yeah, so I think, um, we were asked, or people were asked if, uh, we would, um, I think we jumped from X C. Would be willing to offer, um, that's definitely an option, but we currently offer for, um, insurance, health insurance coverage.
So we need to reach out to them. Now, before we reach out to them, let me just ask something board wants to do.
I don't see it being an issue, I guess, I mean, you know, ultimately it's going to come down to cost potentially, so. Certainly, reach out, see what it's, see what they, see if that's, if it's going there.
Would like to reach out?
Uh, I'm called, get on that.
Okay. All right, emergency management. We have, well, Jen, Jen's not here, but this might be a good time for, you want to talk about the fire truck?
Well, we'll have to, we can talk about the fire, we see something with emergency major, we could be, uh, the fire issue. So the fire issue with month of June, we get seventeen hogs, service fourteen medicals, one eighty-eight bombing, two motor vehicle accidents, uh, chief, chief wheel or an engineer, engineer. Backing drove engine four home to Middleton, Louisiana. Uh, significant burns underway, equipment for the radios, tool mops, etc., to be serviced this week. Uh, members have to train on new equipment. F N P E R was promoted to rapid lieutenant, received more applications from qualified applicants, both with EMS and certified firefighter. Uh, additional working, additional work being completed on fire stations, and storm options for AC and fire station. Um, last one on the city's fire base is because, uh, it's getting a little hot, and some, some of the, uh, medication has to be kept in a certain temperature, so they're talking about P V A C with, uh, ambulance, and sort of, yeah. Um, so that's, and then Jared did reach out to me, uh, by, she reached out to me this morning, and he said that, um, we have the old fire truck that we've been playing, and we talked about, uh, selling that. And there was a town in Northern Maine, town of Charlotte, Maine, that is looking to purchase that from the town of Milton for forty thousand dollars. And I know that, uh, Jared said he spoke when, when we talked about the gentleman that he talked to about trading that and things. You know, we might get forty-two thousand, so he thought this was a decent price, it's going to live in Northern Maine. They want to come down tomorrow and purchase it, and pay this check for forty thousand dollars. So I am here to ask someone if we are okay with, with selling it to the town of Charlotte, Maine, for forty thousand dollars.
Let me do that motion.
Oh, second.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
Okay. Next thing we have is, Howie Parker.
Yes. Sorry, Bonnie, if I get too loud.
Oh, I'll just.
Dan Phillips, uh, P H I L O I P S, uh, resident, the road agent. And this is for June ninth through today, July fourteenth. Um, Break New Durham Road, uh, put the broom on the loader, which we have a broom that goes on the loader, we're sweeping the roads. I had a request to sweep, um, the intersection of New Durham Road and Silver Street, which is where it comes off the dirt. So get that done, did that on a rainy day, so keep the dust in them. Uh, we had a tree come down on Gary Road. Um, the fire department had called out and cut it out, get it out of the road, so the next day we went out. And I cut the tree out and, uh, chipped the brush. Uh, I got a call from one of the bus drivers, um, about a bush that was, um, blocking the site out of the exit of the school, so we went down and took care of that for them. Um, cut the shoulders on Governor's Road, uh, in preparation for the paving. And basically, all that is, is scraping off all the excess winter sand and dirt, uh, so that the water sheds off and gets into the ditch lines. Uh, so we did that. Uh, we had some brush that we had to cut on Governor's Road to cheap that, so we did that, chipped that up. Uh, there was a culvert that we had to replace on Governor's Road before the paving was done. Um, we did replace that, that culvert. Um, I was asked to add a message on to the, uh, message board out front for the school. Uh, did that. Uh, after we got done scraping all the shoulders on Governor's Road, I, I took that loader. We had another, uh, little rainy day, so I, I swept that in preparation for the pavement. Uh, we've mowed the lawns and done the trimming as needed, they need to be done again. Uh, so that, those will be, those will be done. We just hired someone to, uh, help us take care of the lawns and around the, uh, around the whole town hall, the fire department and all that. Um, started cutting some shoulders on Silver Street. Uh, we did a little shim job over there, uh, in preparation for, hopefully next year will be your lane, the whole thing. So that'll give us pretty much all the main drags coming into town. Um, King's Highway, uh, Silver Street, New Durham Road would be probably the next one, and then Ridge Road. We, uh, had, after we put the culvert in, we had it gravelled, so we had to prep for when the pavers were coming. So we prepped, uh, prepped the cut, and they, the pavers paved that in before they paved the road. Um, they paved Governor's Road, Connor Nicola Road from Silver Street up to Dudley. Uh, that had never been thought before, it was starting to allocate a crack, yeah, just was starting to crack up. Uh, so it was a good time to do that, they gave us a really good price, they were in that same, uh, vicinity. So as far as the move prices go, they gave us a good price on the pavement. Um, after they got down the pavement, we went through and gravelled all the, uh, gravel driveways. Um, because obviously when you pave, there's a little drop-off there. Um, so we normally redo the driveways as soon as we can right after the paving, uh, so it doesn't ruin that pavement. And then, uh, the recontract the paving company to shoulder graveling, which they had done already. Uh, let's see. I had a resident call from Twelve Lane Road, uh, about some, uh, drainage issues. There was a ditch line that was there before, over the years, it had gotten filled in, and, and the grass had kind of taken over. So, uh, usually on the dirt roads, we'll do from driveway to driveway, because as you plow them at the time, the excess sand and all that stuff ends up filling the ditches in, so you have to maintain those a little bit more than you would, uh, than on a paved road. So, uh, Twelve Lane Road, we, the resident called, we took care of the ditch up front of that. We had a resident call from, um, Forty-two Spruce Road, similar thing. Uh, old ditch line that used to be there, and, uh, had a puddle over front. So we ditched that, brought that down around the corner to where the, uh, the culvert was, it went under the road. Um, I had a resident email us from Sixty-One Shore, uh, above a shoulder. So we went down and gravelled that, that was washed, it's on the way down Betty Joe Beach, it's kind of a little hill there, and, uh, the shoulder had washed a little bit. So we went down and put some, uh, some shoulder gravel in that and rolled that for them. We've been cleaning up the beach as needed, I did it again this morning, uh, it's been getting a little more use. Uh, we, we've tried it, uh, we've, we've had good luck, we, last year we had a trash can down there, and was picking up the trash twice a week, and, uh, we've tried it without the trash can. Pretty much everybody has been bringing out, bringing out their own trash, which is a good thing. Last year it seemed to be getting filled with a lot of alcoholic beverage bottles and cans and stuff. So we tried it this way, and it's been working out. Uh, there is some stuff that we have to police a little bit, but, uh, it's, it's, it's not nearly as bad as it was with the trash can, imagine that. Um, let's see. Um, I cut some brush around the chevrons up here on King's Highway, and we'll be going around, we're looking at some of the road signs. Uh, I know, I know it's over here, the stop sign coming down at the end of New Durham Road. So within the next, uh, week or so, we'll be helping to have, cutting around those signs. If you have any that you can't see, please feel free to call down at the shop, or you can email, or you can even swing by, we're there from, uh, six o'clock in the morning till four-thirty in the afternoon, Monday through Thursday. And, uh, I usually try to check my emails and the messages first in the morning. I do try to check them at lunchtime, but when I come back at the end of the day, sometimes it doesn't work. Not always that way, but definitely always in the morning, and I always try to respond back, whether you like the response or not, but I do try to give you a, some, some kind of an answer or a response. Um, we had a few flags that were messed up that we have around town, and this was, uh, just before I left on vacation. It was before the fourth, and if you're going to fly a flag, Independence Day, they should be looking good, in my thoughts. So there was a couple that were ripped and stuck to the poles and stuff, so we went around and took care of those. Um, we have two trucks that are off the bed, and, um, old plow trucks, one to two thousand three. Um, just a plow truck with the, uh, Frank. Just a plow truck with the uh, frame on it. And then the other plow truck was a, a smaller model, midsize, like a, probably like a Chevy fifty-five hundred type thing. That one's got a front plow with a wing on it. And uh, we already have the replacements for those. Uh, so those, we finally got the equipment that we wanted to get off them. And uh, those, those are up to bid and I believe it's gonna be for thirty days. So that's about it. Is there any questions yet, Tom?
You know, on the corner, Spruce, um, Kipper Curves. Does the drains from those two properties there that are being built, that the two, that stream? Do those come into that culvert and clean that up, the ditch and clean that up?
Those actually, uh, front screws, the one, the, the ditch line that are dipped on Forty Two, that was down around the corner. It's, it's just an eight inch culvert. And that water actually drains through onto those two properties. And then that drains out to um, the wetlands that goes down, goes onto the bridge.
That now, does it, that, that end of the bridge behind or does it go on your line?
I think, no, it actually comes right at the foot of that, it goes in between those two properties. And then, and then it follows down through to Lake Shore and goes out underneath the bridge of the, the box culvert. There's, there is also another culvert just beyond pine that does the same exact thing. Back when they put them in, it was basically, probably got a puddle on this side and just wanted to get rid of that.
I suppose they were a little bit wet in there.
Right.
Something different.
Yep. Any other questions? Josh?
Hey, you guys have a uh, brush hog or anything like that, or is it all manual?
Uh, it's, it's all manual right now. We're in the process of trying to get something, um, either uh, flail mower or the loader. Yeah, so right now, yeah, we, we are definitely in the process of getting something like that because it's, it's raining.
You guys are just manual cutting?
Right, now we have to be.
You guys have like a uh, a plan of where you're going or is it just asking you?
Well, it's pretty much as needed and they, and it all needs it.
Yeah, I know, we honestly, we go back, we've known.
Right.
Yeah. In the past with bigger road and, and we're probably essentially part legal ever.
Yep.
Uh, do you guys do that or are you just trying to bubble the bulk of the time?
Well, right now we're actually guys, so um...
You and two guys or two guys, you and someone else?
Myself and one of the first. So it's, yeah. Taking sanders out, green wings, the pineets, taking care of lawns, it's different. So if we had a big crew, definitely we'd be out doing that every day.
Have you looked into the right little process from one of those parts, like a week at a time?
Uh, well, the trouble is we don't have a line in that right now. I don't have a line for, you know, something, it's, those are quite expensive to rent. That's why we're, we're looking into um, purchasing one so that we can keep up with what we've got cut already. And then there's some of that stuff that you're not gonna be able to use a flail mower on, you're still gonna have to cut by hand. But there are some that you can take care of with that flail mower. Go around the big stuff for now and then cut that and that, that's, that's how we're gonna focus on getting all the brush done. Cause eventually we'd like to have it where you have the roads, the ditch lines and be able to take that machine out for two to three weeks and do the whole town versus having everything wrong there. Scott?
I guess you know if there's been any contact with this, you are, how rich were you?
Yes.
Only because I'd be involved in that somewhat because of the way that they've done this. It floods my property, it floods my property back now, it was all great going down that way. Then I could stand the salt and stuff. But it goes down here, it'll catch it from first bringing on the road. But most of the grain, I have to, I know you can buy that, I have to put it permanently because it comes right down the grain broke. And then it cuts in right after that and it floods my girlfriend right away. I've never had a water like you've had since they've done that. So I'd like to be part of it and I, I've got tons of photos showing all, all the process and all the rain and stuff. One of the board members actually walked in one time and he didn't tell you the same thing, it doesn't even really grab us from here.
Well, this is, this is getting the top coat on, this is a base coat. And it's gonna be a sidewalk with a curving, uh, big dotted curve. So those will, so if you go over, the uh, the wire comes off the top of the, the highway apartment building. And then that comes down this way, it no longer.
Oh, it's going on way to, I'm trying to, I've got all the different parts.
Well, I mean...
I'm not gonna have, just like...
No, no. I can tell you that the job was engineered and it was put in with the grades that were given, but yeah. Now, there is, it is gonna be, it is gonna be talked, which will make a big difference on the wire going to the catch basis. Right now it's kind of making, some of it goes in and some of it goes around and that's why you, you wait to do the talk to let everything settle out. And then you do your talk. They will be coming in to adjust, um, the covers, I had a talk with Angela Page, he's uh, the fire owner's there. And I did discuss with him that we have uh, Old Home Day, uh, which is gonna be coming up, so we don't wanna interfere with that. I know there's a service on the seventeenth and I believe the, the other date's the twenty eighth second. Uh, who likes our email. So we're not gonna, obviously you're not gonna interfere with that as far as the, the talking.
I mean, I could be honest for now, I just, I would, I would be sure. I'll show them all the photos and everything, everything I'm going through. And it's like you said, you're gonna walk through the town and separate from the house. So we're gonna have the road, the talk of the road. Yes.
I'm just, I'm just having a hard time understanding how, we haven't done any work till Ridge Road.
Why don't we set up a meeting between the two of you to discuss this further?
Well, that's fine.
Is there any other questions? Can I get your name?
I'm seeing uh, Paul C.
Sir, can I get your name?
He started plowing, pushing the, pop the snow off the side of the road, that was somebody's property. Do you go back and clean that up in spring? My hundred and three year old aunt down here, that's in Ridge Road. You guys come out on one fifty-three, push it onto her property in this pile of sod. You haven't cleaned it up in three, four years, please get it out.
It is on...
She had some choice word today about...
Yeah, no, it's, 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 like I said, it's on the list.
One, one more thing.
Yeah, so that is a common practice, that's called dumping off and then back.
I had that done for years. First, like, hey, I had to end up with this real stuff on Ridge Road. I was met by the one ton truck parked on opposite side of the road.
What was this now?
Came to crash.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, just the door.
You don't need to be yelling.
No, we don't.
Scared me a little bit and I bet the other night the truck that came through there, street corners out in the road, no lights, no cones, no nothing. Might wanna teach you this.
I, I didn't hear, I didn't, I didn't hear the first part of that, if you could say that again?
So we were met by the truck.
The door was...
The town's last fire on the wrong side of the road. Been down here about a hundred feet of one fifty-three up there.
Yep, was he putting up a sign?
Don't know, he didn't have any light on or, I don't know, he just sitting there at the corner here, shooting. But it is really, you're like, oh, that's...
Mr. Clark? Tim, go ahead.
Two questions.
Sure, two and a half.
I know you guys do the, try to do the trimming around the roads, right?
Yes.
So is that something that could be like, if I, if I, I live on Ridge Road, you come around that sharp corner by the farm?
Yeah.
It's like the branch is rough this far along and it gets one here. So you, the town owns what, six feet and eight feet? It's not what they own.
There isn't, yeah, there isn't, there isn't a given amount for that, it's a distance, except for a lot of people think that it's twenty-five feet from the center of the road. It's wherever the property tends to, so the right of way is where the road falls. Now, the road does not always fall in the center of that right of way. So yeah, it could be six feet, it could be twenty feet that, that the town lines in.
But it's, if there's, if there's a culvert right there, you have to speak to that.
Yeah.
So somebody, if, if, can you hire out like a, like a contractor to cut stuff out?
The, the trouble is, is we have, we have a fixed budget, okay? And there isn't a line for hiring help like that right now. I'm not saying there can't be, um, but, but right now, we are on a line by line budget. Um, and, and that's what we have to, that's what we have to use.
So maybe there's something to think about with the, with the...
Yeah, I just didn't say anything. And there's, there's a lot of parts, cause I just retired and I got to ship over time, so I have a bunch of time.
So, then my second part of that question would be, you guys are down to two people?
Yeah.
Correct. So is there, is there a plan, I mean, is there postings or something out there that people are gonna apply?
We uh, we just, we just hired a person tonight as I was going. And um, they have to have their um, interview tonight with the, with the board. And um, they're just gonna be part-time to come in and mow the lawns. Uh, obviously, um, when you're down to two guys and...
But, but we're exactly, you got nobody, you got new people, something else.
Well, we have, in the wintertime, we have four people.
Okay.
We have a, we have a seasonal part-time guy that comes in just when it snows. Uh, he's not there for forty hours a week, but he comes in when it snows and uh, when it's not snowing, he goes home. And it's us, the three guys, me and two other guys.
The help answer your question was called the job opportunities are post on the website.
About the Milton?
Uh, Milton and he's shot up, yeah.
Hi, Chris, I'm seeing that, I'm watching that, we're on the twenty-third. On the twenty-third, you're also in that week, so, because you have in tough seasons, clean lines, Saturday, the twenty-third, that whole week is booked up, okay?
The week of August, are we paying you in your celebration, the whole week's booked?
For the park.
Including Saturday, yes, Saturday, okay, I just want, please do it.
I, I believe it's gonna be after the latest day.
Okay. I just did my own video while they have you.
No, hey. I can yell that enough, I don't need to yell that some more.
We appreciate you.
Sorry, you have more questions? Questions from the board? No? All right, take it down. So now we have Police Department.
Scott Burdington, Police Department. Uh, so what for corporate month of June? Uh, the department had two hundred and three calls for service through Stratford County Dispatch. Uh, we handled forty-one incidents, no arrests, no accidents here in town this past month. Uh, and five motor vehicles violations were issued. We're continued with uh, recruitment. We worked out some background investigations, we have another candidate in the works, a certified candidate that hopefully will come before the board here in the coming weeks. We assisted the highway department with the paving, roadways. Uh, checked in the van in the mornings, see if there's anything we could do as far as slowing traffic down, helping with traffic. They were replacing teleports, but it's, quote, paving, everything heard. Continue our annual training through P S T C, uh, to meet our annual hourly training requirements. Uh, continued with the speed trailer, every week we'll move that to just a different location in town. Uh, for some people that it works, for some that don't. Over the years for fast experience, it all depends on the drivers and the climate who drive by. Uh, one thing that we do do with the speed trailer is we set it so that it won't read more than five miles an hour with the speeder. I find that's very beneficial because some people will hesitate that speed trailer as a way to see how fast they can go or check your speedometer, et cetera. Uh, so for all those people that are out there watching, one of you, if you go by our speed trail and you're doing more than five over, it's not even ever reading. It's just gonna tell you the slow down. We did have a couple joint investigations, uh, this past month with a couple surrounding communities. Which may end up with the result of uh, a higher police presence in town with this, coming over this week, potentially. Uh, with the whole warrant, whatever you got for us on there, so.
We need by higher police presence?
I'm sorry.
What do you mean by higher police presence?
Uh, like, I'm working a couple cases with state police.
Okay.
And uh, it's the plan this week to uh, address those potentially, so. Officer Hutchins is doing very well, she's making her way through the F D O program. Uh, my hope is, is that in the coming couple weeks, she'll be released out of the solo status. And then from there, continue her field training process with us. I do have a firearms proposal that I was gonna give to you folks tonight. Unfortunately, some of the information that it today was inaccurate, so I have to move off on that, so I will get that to you guys and speak to you at the next meeting. I did get the quotes for the A C units. I believe they were forwarded on to you guys, uh, three different quotes of those A C units, so. And then the only other thing that I have to speak to you guys on is the A C O vehicle. So the A C O vehicle is still parked over here at the highway garage, uh, and we'll be looking to put that up for auction as well. The vehicle itself does run as to, I can tell you it starts, it drives and it stops as to the condition beyond that. Um, I know Jared salvaged some parts off of it for the police chief vehicle, uh, for the command vehicle for the fire department. From speaking with him, he said it's extremely rusty and what have you, what have you. But it's a vehicle that we've had, it's been sitting for quite a few years now. Um, and at this point, I don't see that we have a use for it, so.
Do you have a recommendation as to...
I know, I know for salvage, you could probably get five hundred bucks for it. So my thought was to, to put it out with a minimum bid of five or eight hundred dollars, uh, and then take it from there. The motor runs good.
What year is it?
I believe it's a two thousand fourteen, but I would have to double check.
Just can you rise my up and we'll put that in the meeting?
Perfect.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the public?
Thank you.
All right. Uh, we have anything from the treasurer? Nope. Carl?
Carl Roy, building staff, CEO, Call officer. For the month of June, we had uh, five building permits. One of those consisted of new hall, I think, roads. That resulted in three thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty cents in selected permits. There were five additional block permits that had compromised that electric供电, some of the building issues, so. That resulted in four hundred dollars worth of permanent fees for the month of June. Continued working on getting, getting lined up legally for um, condemning properties and such. And uh, has gone back and we have four before that, so we're gone, given that this week and hopefully get those out this week. For properties that are outside of, of compliance. Outside of that, it's been pretty fun. Nothing, nothing new at least, fortunately. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Oh, can I get your name? Can I get your name?
Roger, you're sir. I'm curious about the permits, there's a lot of houses going up in Middleton. Do we do any kind of checking to make sure these new buildings and these uh, new buildings that are going up, that people are getting permits?
Yes, oh yeah, we've had twelve new permits in the past.
They should be posted, right, I've seen probably that.
Yeah, there's twelve new homes in just the past years. They all have permits.
John, uh...
What's your name? John, okay, clear.
You said you have five permits and one of them is on Main Road. There's two houses on Main Road.
Yeah.
Stretch and then two foundations going in. So they need permits, even for the foundation?
There's two permits that were just done within the past uh, couple weeks. And then there were permits that were from May as well, so. So I felt there was only one that would hold in the month of June. So I think there's one, two, three... And I think there's one, two, three, four maybe, new ones that haven't been finished out on Pink Road that are falling.
Yes, that one. Why do you all, just go ahead?
Yeah. The one that was from the home that just got finished was last year.
Yeah, but there's a Montel home that went out and they have no permit posted.
That should be out there on the road, it does have a permit. That was the only one from June.
Talk about companies and all that stuff. Really, that property there was supposed to be ten feet up, a hundred feet off the road for a house, a deed on it.
Or a covenant?
When they sold that property, it was something in the backlog of what they had. That's correct, or is that houses would be a hundred, on the, on the right side going down, out west, a house that, lots there that would be a hundred feet off the road.
And is that covenants or? Because I don't enforce covenants. That's what I'm.
Well, no, that was what we heard, that that property, the rules of that property were they had to be a hundred feet there or that or.
So I heard about this and I actually had a lot of our assessing clerk looking at it and she wasn't able to find anything in the subdivision plans, the state and such thing. So I don't know if there was a deed situation, anything that's in that deed, I don't think that's a civil. So they might have whatever they weren't supposed to put into your deed, but that doesn't fall on the town, that falls on them and whoever brings up the civil.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Aren't the building permits posted online?
Yes.
Underneath where, code enforcement?
I'm not sure where she, she might have. I think it's just above code enforcement. Might, every month, it might say building permits for this month of twenty twenty-five, this month under documents.
I believe they're also attached to the maintenance of the main board.
I don't post them.
So if you go into the documents section.
Documents?
Of the website, building permits are listed. You have to click on, it's building, right now it's building permits twenty twenty-five. And then for, right now, we have May, June, July, no, not July, I'm sorry. We have January, March, April, May, and June.
To say on the building permits, sorry, on the building permits for Pink Road, there was a very large confusion for addresses. So like one person messed up an address, that had a whole cascading effect. So a lot of those permits, when you go to look them up, they have that lot number, it's a lot number, a pad number. It was very confusing. Those should be fixed very soon, if not already. Because the state comes in, ninety-one one comes in, gives the addresses. They did that at first and they got messed up. So the locations of all of these properties got messed up, which means when you look them up in the permit application thing, the limited post, that all those addresses aren't gonna be on there because they didn't have this thing system.
Go ahead, yeah.
Hi, Carol, there's a quick question. No need to get into the details of that. Any discussion with the number of, the number of permits allowed? Can you try to manage effectively? Has that been discussed at all? I'll stay to that in the planning board. So for us, the one we would, that we kind of had a planning board. It has been, we have discussed it and we have moved forward with it, but it is, it is something that has been kind of on the radar to, and whether, if you do limit it, do you limit it to a number of builds, a contractor?
Right.
So it has been discussed at prior planning board, but it hasn't moved forward in, I think, since John Owen. Because we had, I think he brought up, because it's like, well, that's kind of one of the ways maybe potentially to slow, kind of, for houses in town.
Something else? Comments from the B O S? All right, comments from the public? General comments? Seen them?
I'm here to discuss the Casella.
Um, it wasn't on the agenda, but we can.
Well, it's.
You want?
Yeah, it was added, she just said that, so we're, we have, we're currently in the process of going through with the contract with Casella. Our contract terminated the end of June, so we're down with Casella. Tony.
Belangio.
Linda, he sent us a, a one-year contract for, for the town.
Belangio.
Linda, he sent us a, a one-year contract for, for the town. So I just wanted to say to everybody, we can close it and then we can make a decision at the next meeting, I guess.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just, so just.
So yeah, now we have local on the agenda for the twenty-eighth.
Yep.
And we'll make a decision tomorrow.
How many, how many companies have offered a contract, lease management? Just one?
We have, we reached out, we reached out to lease management and we didn't get anything back, at least not aware that we got anything back from.
Because they could come and speak, right? And Casella, and then I guess that would be.
Yeah, I think that the only, then there's that, I think, it was a place out of Maine where I was not on there. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, see, no further discussion?
I'll make a motion, we enjoy it, etc. Jeff?
I'll step in.
All of them there?
Hi, thanks, everybody.